Change.
Uh, Prince, if you want to start with, since we, it was brought up, public safety. Do you want to, Mary Jean wants to stay there?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Mm-hmm. I'm happy with the Internal Affairs Committee, if everybody that's on it is okay.
On your, uh, Public Safety Committee, are there any, is there anyone else that wants to get on it, or anybody that wants to get off of it? Uh, you've got, uh, on, on Public Safety, Linda DeWalt, Heathcree Patrick, Joel Williams, Wayne Cone, and Mary Jean Krieger is the Chair.
I'd like to join that one.
Okay. We will add Chris Head to that. Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, let's go back to, uh...
Start at the top.
All right, Community, Environment, Service and Welfare, Joel Williams, current Chair.
Like it is.
You want to stay there? Is there anybody that would like to be added or deleted from that one?
I'd like to join that one.
Okay, so that makes Mary Jean Krieger, Linda DeWalt, Heathcree Patrick, Wayne Cone, Chris Head, Joel Williams Chair. Mitch Magnus, Finance, are you okay staying as Chair?
I would leave that to the...
I believe you.
Yes.
All in favor, yes.
That really wasn't a question. If asking. Okay. Uh, Internal Affairs, Linda DeWalt, Chairman.
I'm good staying there and...
Uh, current assignment is Mary Jean, Mitch Magnus, Bill Boswell.
I'll join that one.
There's a reason for that.
It's about time.
All right, Public Safety, we've already dealt with, Public Works and Transportation, Bill Boswell Chair.
I would like to throw my name in the hat for that.
There we go. Okay, and currently, your members are Chris Head, Joel Williams, Wayne Cone.
And I'd like to stay on that committee.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, what is your pleasure? Do you, are you stepping down as Chair?
Yes.
Okay. So, does anyone else want to be Chair? Okay?
I said I did.
Chris. That'll be Chris.
Yes.
Okay? So, Chris Head Chair, and Bill Boswell Member. All right, then, uh, anyone else wanting to make a change on the membership side of that one? Okay, uh, Resources and Policy?
I'd like to chair that.
Bill Boswell Chair. Anyone else interested?
Would like to stay on the committee.
I want to stay.
Chris was...
I want to stay on that committee.
So, you're going to step down as Chair and stay on this committee?
I figure that's the only way I'm going to get a die.
Oh. Okay?
All right, I'll get the die.
Uh, so that leaves, as Members for the Resource and Policy, will be Mitch Magnus, Heathcree Patrick, Joel Williams, Wayne Cone, and Chris Head, with Bill Boswell as Chair.
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
Okay. Any changes to your council appointments, planning commission, parks and rec liaisons, perpetual care? And Mayor Pro Tem again is Wayne?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
Do we have, uh, Mary Jean and Heath still?
Yeah, Mary Jean and Heath at CAT.
You're good with that?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And I know she'll want to keep perpetual care.
Yeah, she's doing a good job there.
Okay. I will retype these and get them all out to you guys, uh, to be voted on at your January meeting.
I like that, that's fabulous.
Yeah, that was good, uh, okay, we'll go down to committee assignments and, uh, jump right over to Joel. We've got the right-of-way, we have to... You want to address that, Wayne?
We're going to have to, I guess, take a step back and modify the way we handle, uh, scheduling public hearings for right-of-way appointments. Next week, Grant will have a resolution drafted that will actually schedule the public hearing for next month's council meeting. And I guess this is a requirement specific to right-of-way, and that the only way we can schedule a public hearing is by a resolution of the council. So, we will have to draft a resolution out, resolution out to you as quick as we can.
Yeah, I think you just learned that today.
We did, the city has traditionally just scheduled a public hearing ahead of the, uh, council meeting, which it was going to be considered, and we're going to need to make a change.
Is Michael aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anything else from usual, that's it, Mitch?
Nothing from Finance unless Luke has any comments, it's slow time in Finance, at least with the city.
We got water auditors just ran it out the last three days, everything seems to feel pretty good, uh, we'll have another more in a couple weeks, so, somebody here telling me I'll let you know?
That's all.
Okay. Hey, Linda.
I'm good.
Says holiday pay update.
Somebody's calling.
Mary Jean.
No, no. That's the, it's the present of that.
That's fine.
How do you hang up? Got a lot of buttons going on here, okay. Hey, hey, you answered?
Yeah.
Answered, hung up quick.
Anything you say, again, we'll be used to it.
They want to, they would want to buy a warranty for our company.
Sleep alone, we'll pay back.
Yeah. All right, Linda.
Um, I don't think I have anything.
Okay, what was the holiday pay update, uh, was it?
Uh, I can tell.
Go back to you.
Uh, the mayor had asked me to work on an update to our holiday pay, it's, uh, I guess what our personnel policy actually says, uh, for non-uniformed employees, has been debated quite a bit over the last several years. In the packet and on the drive, there should be, uh, one of the pages kind of gives an overview of, of where we've been and what it says, and kind of the issues that we've had. Currently, it kind of reads it one of two ways, either, because it says employees get paid double time if they work on a paid holiday. Well, it's been interpreted as they get their holiday pay plus the double time for the hours worked on that holiday, because that's what it says, the double time. Um, the other way is, the double time means half of that's the holiday pay, the other half is they're getting straight pay for the hours worked on it.
Correct.
They've done it both ways over the years, uh, and so, we're kind of trying to, one, get clarified in the Personnel Policy Manual, as well as find, maybe find a little bit of middle ground, um, because it is something that the non-uniformed employees feel like has been taken away from them over the last eight-plus years. Um, so, there is a resolution, draft resolution, if you take a look at and consider, that would basically change, um, the policy to where, and clarify that employed part, let's see, I want to get to the right part here. Uh, full-time employees required to work on a company holiday will receive regular pay for the holiday, plus one and one-half times the employee's regular rate of pay for each hour worked on a company holiday. So, they'll get their holiday pay plus time and a half. Um, and then for part-time employees, that would be, they would get their holiday pay that they're due, if they're due by their employment status, plus straight time for the time of work. Does anybody have any questions as far as...
So, the, the holiday pay is essentially just another day of pay?
Yes.
So, it's just straight, because I read it, that's what I interpreted it as, you know, in other words, you work five days, Christmas is in there.
Yeah.
You're called out, you're going to get those five days, but for Christmas, in addition, you get a time and a half.
For the, just for the hours that you worked.
Just the hours you worked.
Correct.
Okay. That's the way I read it, when I read the resolution, so...
And in the past, it's been they've gotten their just regular holiday pay, and then they've gotten double time for the hours worked, and that was changed in the past, about eight years ago, um, to where it was, they were only paid straight time. So, this is kind of middle ground, um, and clarification of what...
Right, so, essentially, the reason for it is, we weren't following the, the, the policy of the time that was official, correct? Because we weren't paying them anything in addition.
Some were not, some were.
I would say, I, I know at Public Works, before I got here, they were getting double time, um, for hours worked on a holiday. The administration at that time interpreted this policy different than what had been interpreted in the past.
Yeah, that's what, exactly.
I get, I, do we not, did they not have a written policy?
It, it is a written policy, um...
Now, the, the one you've been operating under.
Yeah, it's, and it states, "Full-time employees will be paid double time for hours worked on a company holiday." That's what the policy currently states in our Personnel Policy Manual.
And we think that's a, a little muddy, not real clear.
Right, right, I'm, I'm, I'm no objection, I'm just a little confused as to how it got convoluted in the first place.
Just different interpretations of the same thing.
That's the scary part, is that...
That's what, the, the way I read it is, this is an interpretive issue, that's all it is.
Yes, and so, the proposed, the proposed change in the resolution, the intent is to make it very clear as to what...
Shouldn't make any difference. I understand, but this is...
No, I would agree with you on that, that ain't what I said.
But we're not, this is not good old boy politics anymore.
Ain't got anything to do with it.
That's what it was.
It didn't have anything to do with it.
Call it what you want to, that's what it was.
No, it wasn't.
If he did something other than what the policy said, whoever that person was...
Interpretation.
Good old boy politics, case closed?
Wasn't.
Sorry.
He was wrong.
You're not going to change my ear.
He was wrong, but I'm trying to tell you, it was his interpretation, and he was wrong.
Okay.
Just to help...
There's no need to argue it.
No, I told him...
It should have been clarified sometime.
It should have been clarified.
That's pretty simple.
To that, I will make a motion to committee, uh, to move that resolution as presented in the packet.
Second.
Is that coming out of your committee?
Yes.
Yes.
You are, you are.
Okay. Okay.
And was our.
Can you vote?
Yes, we, you would leave that.
Any discussion?
Sorry, got you sidetracked with the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, everybody in favor, or?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay, I guess we're going to count it.
Since Mary Jean's out here, is there any member of the committee that needs to...
I'm not on that committee, you're on stuff end.
Mark, do you have anything? I mean, Chief.
Okay, so?
We got names.
Bill Boswell.
You do.
I, I don't have anything per se, but I think Wade wants to bring us up today on the Public Safety bill.
Thank you.
Um, as you know, we're contracted with, uh, Wimmer Delany and Davidson for the architecture, they're moving forward with the design. Um, we have selected Davis Construction to be the construction manager for it. I've kind of, we've tied down, negotiated the main points of their contract, and I'm supposed to have a draft copy of that by middle of next week. Um, I would like if it's acceptable to the City Council, place it on the agenda for the next council meeting, to review and approve that contract, so that we can go ahead and get them on board, uh, working on the project and working with, um, the, our architects. Other than that, there's no real update right now, we hope, still hope, within a few months, that we'll have a, a nice preliminary design with a pretty, with a very accurate, with a cost estimate of what we're going to be doing, and that's one of the reasons why we're bringing the construction manager on, uh, early on in the process, so...
Yeah, I'd like everybody to realize also, I think this was a big win for the city. We, uh, we received a lot of contractors that wanted to be involved, we narrowed it down to four, I say we, there was a committee of seven people, they narrowed it down to four, and I'm proud to say that the two finalists were both local people, and that was, I, I was glad it really worked out that way, so... Any other questions about, uh, Public Safety building? It's going to be exciting, it's a few months away from turning dirt, it's going to be exciting, and at that time, we'll have to start talking about this place, but we can wait. Okay. Anything else in...
No, that's it.
Okay, we go on to...
Resource and Policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
All the way down to Chris.
All right, I think Chief Gready's wanting to bring up a couple of ordinances.
I've made copies, uh, I think if you don't have them, so, I've got more. One, the first one let's talk about is the marijuana ordinance. This, uh, this is going to address our medical marijuana, since it's been active in the past, that, uh, if you have a legal prescription, have a medical marijuana card, you will now be able to possess two and a half ounces of marijuana, that's properly packaged and sold by the state for medicinal purposes. Now, that being said, ninety-nine percent of that's going to be smoked, all right? If we don't take some sort of measure, they can walk right down the sidewalk and smoke in public. Several cities have already enacted ordinances regarding this. I've reached out to the Arkansas Associations of Chiefs of Police, and I've received several different city ordinances. Um, I've copied, pasted, added to, deleted, uh, visited with Grant, and I think we've came up with one that is suitable for Harrison. It's something that I would request that, uh, that we would, uh, approve and pass at, in the proper manner, at the proper time. Uh, there's, if y'all want to just take a moment and kind of read it there, see if y'all have any questions.
Chris, is this basically like possessing alcohol in public?
I guess you could look at it that way, it's, it's a completely, uh...
Man, I understand what we're dealing with.
Right, well, you know, the same, same way, there's state statute out there that prohibits you from drinking in public.
And that limits...
Right, but there's not state statute out there that prohibits you from taking medicine in public. And, you know, if this was in the form of a THC pill, nobody's, nobody could care less, but, you know, when you got somebody sitting on the square, smoking a joint, getting high, you know, I think the majority of the people just, does not want that, whether they're doing it legally or not.
Right.
And, and, you know, so, another thing that we need to consider, you can be intoxicated on illegal medication.
Everybody.
It don't have to be, uh, alcohol, it don't have to be illegal narcotics. You get a prescription from your doctor, there's certain medications you're not supposed to take and operate machinery, and they can make you just as impaired as someone that's intoxicated on alcohol, or, uh, high on some illegal narcotic.
Chief Gready, is it not true that on federal lands, Buffalo National River, Corvyn Engineer Park, uh, the federal building, the post office, it doesn't matter whether you have a medical marijuana card, you would be in violation of federal law if you possess it?
You can be charged anywhere in the United States, it don't have to be only on federal land, it is still against the federal law of the United States to possess marijuana.
Okay.
The federal government, the DEA, they're not going to enforce that in states that pass medical marijuana or recreational marijuana.
But I guess I'm asking...
But it's still against federal law, it, it is, they can be charged.
But if, I guess the reason I ask that is because we have two, obviously Buffalo River and, and, uh, Corvyn Engineer Parks, things like that are not within our, uh, city limits, but the federal building is.
Correct.
The post office is.
Correct.
So, I'm just asking the question, is that true or not? And would you be, if, if you were at the, if, if someone is at the post office and possessing it, would they be arrested if a federal officer was there?
If a federal officer wanted to arrest him, he could.
Okay.
And he could arrest him, uh...
Well, I understand, on a city square, right, but I mean...
Yeah, he could. And, you know, this, this, this basically goes along with, uh, a lot of cities have enacted smoking ordinances, where you cannot smoke regular tobacco, you know, within a building, or so close to a building, or so close to a public facility or something. Uh, this, this is just something that, that I feel like we need, uh, that will help control that, uh, by all means, if somebody has a medical marijuana card and has a legal prescription, I mean, they're entitled to two and a half ounces. When I went to work, one ounce was a felony charge if you went to the penitentiary. So, that's how much things have changed in the last thirty-two years.
I do like, uh, the part of it with the motor vehicle, and obviously, this is geared toward children, because...
Right.
That's the bulk of, of Section A.
Right. And it, it, it pretty well prohibits anyone from, uh, using, smoking marijuana in public, is what it is. Because, you know, the majority of the people, I mean, the majority of the people's offended if you're standing by and smoking a cigarette, so I'm sure they'll be offended if you're standing by and smoking a joint, so... But anyway, I, I think this is a, a, a solid, a solid, uh, policy that I, I hope we can, can get passed and approved, uh, as an ordinance, that would give us a little extra teeth in the enforcement part of it, to regulate this. I've visited with Grant regarding this, one of the additions I made, I added drug paraphernalia for this ordinance, it's, uh, under letter H at the very bottom of the first page. And the reason I've done that, as I've said, marijuana was a, if you possessed an ounce or more up until, how long has it been, John, five, six, eight years, when they changed that? If you had an ounce or more, it was a felony charge, you go to the penitentiary for it. Now, it's up to four ounces before it's even a felony. That's, that's a lot of marijuana, that's like four, four gallon Ziploc bags, so, yeah. Um, anyway, um, our officers daily encounter people with personal use of marijuana. The least charge, I guess, I, I don't know if that's the best way to say that or not, the minimum charge we can charge that person with today is a Class A misdemeanor. Okay, well, under Title 12 of Arkansas State Statute, we are, uh, regulated, or mandated, I guess you should say, to, we catch you with personal use of marijuana, we have to physically arrest you, if you're in a vehicle, we'll tow your car, we have to transport you to the police department, we have to fingerprint you, we have to, uh, photograph you, and book you, and either incarcerate you, or you have to post a bond. That's two hours minimum for an officer on a charge that when it goes to District Court, you're going to be fined and released. But by state statute, we're required to do those fingerprint photographs, that's what we're required to do. And that's the next statute, that is why I brought the shoplifting statute also. I'm looking at this from saving man-hours. The minimum charge we can charge somebody with at Walmart that steals a can of chewing tobacco is a Class A misdemeanor. We have to physically arrest them, bring them down here, fingerprint, fingerprint them and photograph them, and make them post bond, or find a place to transport them and lock them up. I'm not wanting to usurp the state law, by no means, I'm not making it any more difficult, but I think if we have a city ordinance that we can charge these offenses under, that, that would put our officers on the street. Well, the other night, we had three shoplifters and two misdemeanor marijuana arrests. That's ten hours that those officers that made those arrests are off the street, doing paperwork, booking, photographing, fingerprinting, waiting on bondsman to get here, whatever, that they're having to babysit this person that is not going to receive anything but a fine when they go to District Court, they're just not going to receive imprisonment time for, for this, this small, uh, you know, crime. And, uh, and that's why that, uh, the, the shoplifting ordinance is there to, it, uh, and I, I took that verbatim out of the Criminal Code, and I wish that our state legislators would, would correct this on, on a legislative basis, uh, which I visit with several of our reps and a couple of our senators, uh, quite a bit. You know, it, it, it's hard to get stuff through down there in Little Rock sometimes, but, I mean, they could clean some of this stuff up for us, but they've not. The shoplifting presumption in the Criminal Code is exactly as it is written on the ordinance, or the proposed ordinance that I've presented to you all tonight. It does not have a penalty in the Criminal Code. So, yeah, you're guilty of shoplifting, but there's nothing we can charge you with, except theft of property, which is a Class A misdemeanor.
Miss gives you more bite.
Well, that, well, it gives us more lenience, uh, it, it frees our officers up, uh, you've got a young person, you know, twenty-year-old, they, they stole a six-pack of beer, something, you know, something that...
Right.
It's not much money, okay? We know they're not going to lock them up for that, we know they're going to be fined for that if they're found guilty.
Okay.
But that gives us another option, we can write that person a ticket, you are assigned this court date. Basically, they're signing a signature bond, and you sign a, a ticket or a citation that's issued on the street, the same as if we bring them down here, and we call five different jails that cannot hold them, and we eventually release them on their signature here two hours later.
I think that, one of the good things that the chief is recommending, uh, the officer themselves can make the decision as to, uh, go the route of a ticket or bring them down.
Right, if you've got a habitual offender that needs to be run through the process, yeah, we're going to bring him down here, but, you know, I mean, yeah, you got a guy that's got an ounce of marijuana, yeah, you're probably not going to get a ticket and get released, you're probably going to come down and be sent through the process, because you've got a big bag of marijuana that's not just for you, it's for you and all of your buddies, so, uh, and that's where, you know, and, and, and some of, of our staff, and, uh, Chief Cagle and I talked about this earlier today, uh, had thought about quantifying the amount, and I said, let's not, let's not handcuff ourselves, you know, I mean, our officers are smart, they're, you know, they're sworn to uphold the law, and they've been trained, they know who needs to be charged and who don't, let's leave the discretion with the officer. Today's world, we've regulated ourself into corners that we can't get out of, and, you know, let, let, let's give the guys a chance to do what's right, so...
Just curious, what, have you consulted retailers with this, do they, are they in favor of this?
The retailers, uh, as long as we come out and make an arrest, write them a ticket, get their property back, that's all that they, you know, most of them care about. Usually, if someone shoplifts, they're criminally trespassed at that point, that way, if they ever show up at that establishment again, they can be arrested on the spot for trespassing.
Good.
Walmart's one of the easiest places to, uh, to work, and it's worked, it's worked by career criminals, because Walmart can't stop them, they're ordered not to stop. Walmart employees are frustrated at the corporate policies they have, so... But anyway, this, this gives our guys a chance to go out there, yeah, they've caught them, they, they, they've caught the, the, say it's at Walmart, Walmart personnel's caught them with the, with the merchandise, we've either got the merchandise back, or we seize it for evidence if it's damaged, uh, we give them a court date, they go to court, and, you know, if they don't show up for court, we issue a warrant for their arrest, and we go pick them up, and then we lock them up.
So, what you're saying is...
So what you're saying is this doesn't make the penalties go away, it just streamlines the process?
It does not make the penalties go away. The penalties would still be the same.
Because we want to make that clear, that we're not making it easier for you to smoke marijuana, or, or shoplift, or anything like that. We're just, we're just streamlining the process to-
Right. And if you get, yeah, those penalties there is, is well within the same as a Class A misdemeanor, wouldn't you say, on both of them? I think I put one, one hundred, on shoplifting, one to five hundred for a fine with one day, and/or one day up to five days imprisonment, and then on the medical marijuana, marijuana possession, it is punishable by no less than a hundred dollars, not to exceed fifteen hundred. So, no, by no means are we making it less fines or less punishment.
Mr. Pad, I would make a motion to approve, I'll just do them separately, the, first the shoplifting ordinance, and moving on, to move on to council.
Good.
Before we take a vote, I'd like to make a personal comment, and I address this to you, Chief Grady. It, it grieves me tremendously that we've lowered the bar in our society to the point where marijuana's okay.
Right.
Do you feel like this marijuana ordinance makes it as tough as we can, given the current state law?
Right.
It does?
It does.
You think so?
Given the current situation.
Yeah.
Because here's, here's the problem. You can be locked up for a year in the county jail, or charged a thousand dollar fine for a Class A misdemeanor, okay? That's not going to happen for personal marijuana, in, in any court in this state. However, we still have that option. Like I said, we catch the guy out here with an ounce of marijuana, he's not going to get cited and released. The ones we're going to cite and release are the ones that's got a personal use baggie, we're going to confiscate that, we're going to confiscate, confiscate their paraphernalia that they used to ingest that into their system, and we'll take that to court, and they're issued a court date. The officers still have the option of charging them under state statute with a Class A misdemeanor. And depending on the, every situation's different, depending on the amount they have, but-
I would assume, excuse me for interrupting, but also if they're forthcoming.
Oh yeah, right, right.
If they're giving you a lot of trouble, you're more likely to-
If, if, if it's a problem, you know, repeat offenders, like I said, yes, I mean, they're not going to be, they're not going to be cited and released. It's just, it's the officer, officers, the discretion to, obviously if the person's impaired, they're going to go to jail too. Same as you would as under public intoxication, same charge.
I just want to make it clear to the public, and any public people that feel that I'm wrong for my position, that's fine.
Well, and then-
But I just want to say it for God and everyone, that I am against marijuana being accepted in this society.
Right.
Personally.
Right.
And that's my piece. We have a motion in a second to move these to full council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And my motion was just to move the shoplifting?
I was going to say-
So I will make a second motion to move the marijuana ordinance on to council.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, thank you, thank you.
All right, now we've got an amendment that we want to make to the business license, I think Chief Lowry's going to speak to that one.
Yes, I would, on the business license that we worked on last year, once we got it implemented and started, we was challenged on one situation in the, in the ordinance, and I would just like some clarification from you all, as to whether we need to amend this, or just go with the way I was intending to enforce it. But in Section 4.01403, talks about the number of employees. And on line A, it's one to forty-nine employees. Well, we had a certain business in town that felt like if they weren't an employee, they was an owner, they was an owner, and they felt like they didn't need to pay the fee for doing business. Before we cited them in the court for not obeying the ordinance, I wanted to get some clarification from you all, and Grant as well, and see if, if this is something that we need to address, or should we just move forward with the intent of what we passed.
It's a good question. I guess, Michael, I guess my question would be, as an owner, and I've never been in a position to own a business of my own, so I prefer Mitch, and Jerry, and Jeff, when you guys had business of your, and you have, do you cut yourself a paycheck?
You may, you may not.
You may or may not, but you're always referred to as self-employed.
Self-employed, that was my exact interpretation.
So, that's another good, I mean, you're employed by yourself.
Bill, officially, you're, you're not an employee. And we know the intent, and we probably only have one or two, but I happened to take the call from the gentleman, and, and he wasn't, I'm sure you spoke to him too.
Yeah, I did during the-
He was just somebody that wanted to go by the book, and I'm sure he's going to pay, but I, I think we need to change it. I think we need to amend it to read zero to forty-nine. And the reason I say that, Jeff and I in real estate, we, we ask ourselves these questions a lot, you know, like, what would we do if we rewrote it today? I think we would write it zero to forty-nine. I, I, I know I'd strongly recommend that.
You could define an employee as an owner, as well as an-
And you could do that also. You could do that also. But I think it would be differently defined. This is written as well as it could have been. I, I'm surprised we don't have a whole list of items, so I really applaud you, Mark, you and your people for doing that. But anytime we have an opportunity, I think now, you know, it's a different system, we can clean it up.
Grant, what do you recommend? I mean, do we need to go zero to forty-nine, or do we change it to say owner-operator, or whatever?
I think either way's okay, I just think it needs to be clear. I mean, I think for most people, it's clear, but to, that way it doesn't come up again, there's no reason not to make it, make it clear.
Man, I'm not trying to beat the devil up. Is this person still going to say, well, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm still not an employee? See what I'm saying?
You just define, I mean, you can choose your own definitions.
I'm thinking you need to define that owner.
Yep. I agree with that.
Yeah. Well, at your wishes, then what we'll do is, we'll bring it back. If you want to move it on to council, I will present you all document with that.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Were there other items in that?
There was, and that was just simply a, it was on the landlords exempt businesses, residential and commercial landlords, that's a kind of redundancy, because our landlords are landlord regardless, so that will be pulled out as well, just so you know, when it comes back to you.
Any further discussion? You'll have a motion to move it to council?
Salute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, move right through that.
Yes, sir.
You kept that committee?
No.
No, I mean, I thought, you kept it tonight, you kind of-
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you just won't let go.
That's a swan song.
You won't let go. Well, okay, well, that, move down to new business, we already took care of the committees. We have a situation, I think most of you have been notified before we made that decision, that we want to move the committee meeting in February to the first, first Thursday of the month. Several of us are going to municipal leg, and it looks like on that Thursday, the second Thursday, there are a lot of things that we want to be there for. And so because of that, we are, we are moving it. I guess that's just for information purposes, or we don't need a vote on moving it? No. Good. Moving right down to the last item. This is, this is something I'd like to implement going forward, and at first I wanted to do it on a monthly basis, but good old Jeff Pratt disagrees with most of the things I tried to do.
He's birthday boy.
But he, he did that in the other business also. But I'd like to implement a program that where we can recognize individuals in the community that aren't always the names we hear. The movers and the shakers, you know, those people that constantly, I'm sure everybody around this table have received awards for various things, and you'll continue to. But there are other people that, that really are deserving of special recognition, and I'd like to do that by, by calling it a good neighbor award, a Harrison good neighbor award, and I'd like to announce those at committee meetings. And we're looking at maybe once every three months, maybe quarterly we'll have one, and I'm sure we'll get some recommendations, but I probably got a long list that I could use. But the first people that I would like to recommend is, and you know what, I'm thinking about this, I would like to vote on it. I'm not sure we have to, but I would like to do that. I think it makes, it gives it a little more importance to the meaning of it. So, if, I know we don't have it under a committee tonight, and may not, but Rachel and Caleb Couch, just thirty days ago, do they go to your church?
That sounds very familiar.
Okay. I know you can't keep up with it now, can you? They, they started a program called Neighbors Helping Neighbors, maybe you've seen it on Facebook. Within thirty days, they had literally helped hundreds of people. And just last weekend, they recruited fifteen to twenty people that went and tore a house down in Alpena. And this is not restricted to Harrison, as you know, we're not restricted to Harrison in many things. We serve, you know, we serve everyone. But they have done so much good in so short a time. When I spoke to her on the phone, I, I recommended strongly that they slow down, because she's identified such a need, and I have always believed, and I'll bet you agree with this, I've always believed that taking care of the needy needs to be done by volunteers or our churches. It doesn't need to be done by the government.
Correct.
And so-
That's exactly right.
With that, with that said, this is a volunteer group that I think deserves a lot of special recognition. So if anybody is watching on Facebook, you might shoot Rachel and Caleb a message, and tell them that we'd recommend that. So I'd like to recommend that. If we have a motion-
I will make that motion.
Good. Motion in a second? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. I want to make another statement. Hey, by the way, if you noticed last weekend, we got the sidewalks at the square cleaned, power washed. They, they were hoping to do this for a long time, the business owners at the square. And it just could, for whatever reason, it didn't get done. And we've got people local, and the apartment heads that keep asking me about this. So finally, we got Church 180 together. This was a huge project, folks, huge. It took three pressure washers and eight people, about twelve hours. And the night we ended, it was New Year's Day, and we did it that day because we thought cars wouldn't be parked there, and they worked. So seven o'clock that night, these guys were still out, it was still dark, but they were still out finishing up, and it was kind of cold at that time, and they were kind of wet. So Church 180, I mean, they really came through again, and it looks great down there. We could go on, we could do some buildings, there's so much you could do that, that doesn't cost a lot, that can really clean things up. I'm hoping we can address, and I've talked to Wade about this, the yellow paint on the square, give it a, a new coat, and it just pops. You know, it's like a bow on a package. So, that was great news. The other good thing that we, probably one of my biggest joys of the last year, we encountered yesterday, I know you guys laugh about it because you don't think it's that big a deal, we pretty much, when we started the clean premises deal, we categorized tens as being houses that needed to be torn down. And we identified six, of which five are disposed of. They've either been sold and remodeled or torn down. One is going to be coming to the ground fairly soon. And then I went to categories eight and nine. I considered them the really bad yards, the ones that we've been seeing that have been in ISO for a long time. And we probably, in the beginning, I was working with Public Works and the fire department, and we identified probably twenty that were real bad. I think yesterday, we took down our last one, and this was a very, very difficult one. You, you'll have people resist, but usually they come around, and we've learned the system. The system will work. It takes a little longer, but it will work. This last person, he kind of knew the system too, but he knew how to work it. And, and we beat him yesterday. So I was just real excited about that. I mean, really excited. So, there you have it. What do you think? Is that kind of how it went down? Thanks to this guy, and-
They fixed one of my libraries.
Several others. Yeah, you had a house next door, nothing to do with us, but it's taken care of. The one down at the end of the block, we've been dealing with that forever, Public Works. We had to spend taxpayer money to go in and clean it out, and we'll have to spend a little on this one I mentioned yesterday. But we're taking care of it, we have to.
The neighbors were super excited when they saw the front end loader go into the guy's-
Oh, I would drive by slow, it was like-
It was like, this is, I wouldn't got my wife, that's how excited we were. You gotta get out of there.
Free neighborhood entertainment.
I saw, I saw Jerry take, that's some big school stuff.
And the neighbor shot me one too. He was up top, shot me a picture of how it looked, and it looked good. I, I can't be more proud of what we've done in that. Now we got to keep it up, but, but we've been able to clean up about twenty yards that have been that way for a long time, and, and that was a big job, so. So that's, that's all I have. Any, anything else from council?
I just got a quick question. When are the Christmas lights coming down? Sorry, I'm going to ask, I mean-
I don't know. I don't know. That's, Matt mentioned about a week ago that he was going to get them down, but, but I don't know, we're not, it's not our department.
Well, we paid for them.
We did pay for them, we paid for the lights, and we paid for the recent, I wasn't, I didn't mean that with that way, Bill, but-
I understand, but I mean-
We were, we were-
That's taxpayer money sitting around there, and it's also drawing electricity.
Good point. I would hope rather soon. I'll make it a point to talk to Matt, see if we can do it. He's got the Church 180 people that can help him. They helped put it the other way out, and that was another good deed by them. But the great thing that those people do, they're clean. You know, we had them clean from thirty-three days to about a year that were with us that day, and that was great, so.
Well, the lights really looked good this year. I had a lot of people comment in regard to it. Yeah, around the, you know, the-
Lake Harrison.
Lake Harrison and all.
Anything else from any of you folks? Anybody in the audience? Mike, good to have you with us. Yeah, we have the chamber representative tonight, I know, I think Bob's in Arizona right now. So, okay, well, nothing else. Motion to adjourn, Mary Jean?
Mary Jean's not here. Let's go to the house.
Okay, thank you all.
One of them.
It's easy.